Good evening, everybody. Let's begin this meeting for the District Board of Trustees. Could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Hussein Barry here. Fadwa Hamud.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Celia Nasser.
Here.
Mary Petchukhov.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
President Mead.
Here.
Next item?
Pledge allegiance to the flag. Ms. Nadra Lombardi, Principal of Carter School, will introduce students who will lead the pledge allegiance.
These are the children from Mrs. D'Ortini's class at Carter. We have Nadia Deeb, Mawar Alkabi, Hussein Hassan Muhammad El Sayed, Bogis Al Kaladi, Asil Wahbi, Maya Zenadine, Sarah El Sayadi, Bassam El Atwill, and Saher El Sabah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, to the states, to our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Could the little people come up here, please?
Let's see here, Bassam?
Where's Bassam?
Bassam?
Where's Bassam?
He's watching the monitor.
Hey, Bassam, don't watch the TV. Come here.
Step up, Bassam.
They're going to hand you something, Bassam. Right there.
Where's Bassam? This is Bassam. This is your certificate. Thank you.
Nadja, step up.
Nadja, thank you.
Hassan El Sayed. There's Hassan.
Thank you, young man. Nice job.
Sam El Sayed. Come on up, Sam.
Hi. Nice job.
Ahmed El Sayed.
What grade are these people?
They're preschool.
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 They're not in the grade.
Nice job.
Asil, step up, Asil.
Aren't they awesome?
They're early learners.
Asil?
Yeah.
Asil, here.
Asil? Oh, that's you. Oh, hi.
Maya?
Hi, Maya.
Sama?
Thank you.
Sama Fahki? Okay, thank you.
Not here.
Mawada?
Thank you.
Dokus?
Very nice job.
There you go.
Veltes, thank you.
Sarah? Sarah?
Thank you.
And Sa.
Nice job. Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
I think that's the first time we've been.
Before we move on, we have a moment of silence for Scott Nussel, who was a recent -- who died recently as a member of the employee of the district. And Ms. Trustee Lane would like to tell us a little bit about him before we have a moment of silence.
Mr. Nussel is a long-term employee of our district. I know that he was a parent and a graduate of our district, so I asked President Mead to have a moment of silence for his deceased recently, so.
So maybe we have a moment of silence for this young man who died serving our district. Thank you. Thank you. Next item, please.
Superintendent's update. Agenda items?
So, good evening, everyone. For agenda items, I'm going to ask Mr. Tom Wall and Mr. Aiden Mashur to come up to the podium. We are -- we have a few action items that we're putting on the agenda for tonight for the board to potentially approve, and these are related to the High School Boundary and Capacity Committee. We have Action Item 21, 22, and 23. I'll just kind of explain briefly what they are, and then I'll let Mr. Wall and Mr. -- I believe Mr. Mashur will be here, too.
He's here.
Okay. We're going to have a map as well. So it involves some boundary changes and some construction. So if you look at 21, it's going to be boundary changes to alleviate Dearborn High. Just to summarize, we have 22, which is an infrastructure committee that we like to put together to look at long-term infrastructure that could be multiple things, including current infrastructure, other additions that have been discussed at the study session or other times. We also have -- we'd like to get approval to move on architectural analysis at the Berry Center, which will be important to alleviate some of the population at all the high schools, but specifically Fortson. And then I just want to mention, too, that we don't have an action item, and this was all discussed at the March 1st study session, and we had a very good study session. I appreciate the time of the board and the administrative team. We had a great dialogue. That we're going to further explore Edsel Ford, meaning if the proposal, which is on the table, which is 21, is approved, we are not sure exactly what we need to do at Edsel Ford, but we do have time, so we can make immediate change based on Mr. Wall and Ms. Ali Bazey going out to the school and looking at the building. I've talked to the principal, Mr. Casebolt, and I believe he'll be here as well. Actually, I see him. And so they're all in agreement that we just need a little more time, but we can definitely accommodate the change immediately. It's just that for long-term, we're going to have to study whether that's an addition or possible internal renovations like we did at both Dearborn High and at Fortson. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wall and Mr. Mashur.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Okay, so Proposal 5A, we had looked at the numbers at the study session. You know, again, the changes in 5A would include the UNIS students who currently go to Dearborn High would be going to Fortson instead, and a small percentage of the Woodworth students who go to Fortson would be going to Edsel Ford. Those are the two primary changes in that proposal. When you're looking at the numbers, one of the questions asked was how many students would be eligible for the grandfather clause? So if they had a sibling that's currently at Fortson, for example, would they still be allowed to go to Fortson? So we looked at those numbers for 9th, 10th, and 11th grade. For seniors, they would be leaving, so that would not be part of the grandfather clause. It would only be for those that would have, for 2018-19 or 2019-20, have students that are already at the high school. So for Woodworth to Edsel Ford, that number, we'd have 45 students this year, 2018-19, and then 55 students in 2019-20, and the total number of students would be grandfathered in of that 100 students, so 45 and 55 is 100. Forty-five of those would be eligible for the grandfather clause, so it's actually almost half, which is a lot higher than we anticipated originally for that area. For the UNIS to Fortson, that's 36 students in 1819 and 41 students for 1920, which is 77 students, and of those 77, 19 would be eligible for the grandfather clause. And then the small three-street area of Nona Park and Beach, it's a total of seven students that would be going to Edsel Ford. And in 1819, I'm sorry, yeah, 1819, and 1920, it'd be three students, and two of those would be -- students would be eligible for the grandfather clause out of a total of 10. That's what the numbers look like. Want me to go over all the other details that we talked about before on 5A? One of the things in 5A, I won't go over the details, I guess, but one of the things that the chart is up there, so, you know, everyone can see it. But one of the things with 5A is we looked at Edsel Ford. We know that Edsel Ford, we have some classrooms that are labs or whatever that we can quickly and pretty easily make available for the start of the year, so we would be able to house the new students that would be going there without, you know, any issue at all. Again, the big key for us is Dearborn High, moving some of those students out of Dearborn High. And Fortson has, again, the countless programs that were discussed and so on, that they're looking to continually move kids that are Fortson students, but primarily the majority of their school day would be at the Heights Center.
Trustee, Petlicoff?
I understand the numbers working if they wanted to remain at the old school, if they have a sibling already there. What if the sibling is, say, a 10th grader who would be willing to instead go in the reverse?
To Edsel.
To Edsel?
Yes.
Would we allow for that as well?
Absolutely.
If maybe the parents say, hey, I'm fine with both of them then moving, and the junior or sophomore might be willing to go with their freshman sibling?
Yes. Absolutely, we would, and we would provide busing for that, because that's going to be a new bus area.
It'd be a family, yeah. Okay.
Yes, trustee.
And then if you can just explain to anyone any transportation changes that would happen in this proposal or additions?
Okay, so transportation changes, the students who we used to bus from UNIS to Dearborn High would no longer be bused because they would be going to Fortson, so that would alleviate that, those buses. However, those buses were just in turn transferred those Woodworth students that didn't get bused to Fortson, now they would get bused to Edsel Ford. So as far as the transportation goes, it's not -- it's basically just moving buses as to where they're going, as, you know, and you're not adding any new buses or anything else like that. There would be no areas that would be getting busing that were not getting bused before.
Trustee Thorpe?
Based on the 5A proposal, what type of relief would we see then for the 2018-19 school year?
The -- you're reducing Dearborn High's population by over 2,000, oh, I'm sorry, 2,000, over 200 students, almost 300 students really as to what it is now, so you're reducing the Dearborn High population significantly.
You mean in just this coming fall?
Oh, I'm sorry, just this coming fall.
Just this, yeah.
I'm sorry, just this coming fall, you're going to reduce it by about, let's see, for UNIS, about 40 students, you're reducing it from the UNIS to Fortson students, so that's about 36 students exactly, actually, as we sit right now.
What about the other two schools? What would happen there?
For Fortson, you're losing 45 from Woodworth, but you're adding 36 from UNIS, so you're only going to have a loss of about 10 students at Fortson. And then for Edsel Ford, you would be adding, you figure, 45 and about 50 students additional to Edsel Ford for this fall.
Thanks.
Sure.
Trustee Lane?
So we probably should encourage anyone that's interested to school of choice out of Dearborn High or Fortson to go into Edsel if they are willing to and would like to.
Right.
I would just like to thank you and Ms. Peterson, all of the staff, particularly Mr. Casebolt. When we began this discussion, which was almost a year ago.
May 2017.
Right. We were talking about Dearborn and Fortson. We were always concerned about the numbers there, and Mr. Casebolt came forward and said, look, Edsel could be a part of the relief. Don't just look at those two situations alone. Dr. Green was another person, and Mrs. Al Cadre suggesting the programs that we're adding at Michael Berry Center and elsewhere. So it's been a long year or so, and we've gone through so many different ideas. I want to thank everyone who was a part of it, everybody who came to meetings, and anybody who's really worked on trying to make this the best possible change for our students. I think that -- I hope that we're going to have a really good outcome from this, so.
Thank you, trustee.
Thank you.
Trustee Lane, and thank you for making those comments, because I think they reflect the -- how the board feels. Could I -- yes, sir?
I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Just on the construction side, on item number 21, we have the approval to move forward with the Dearborn High four classroom addition. On today's agenda, you have the subcontractors, the first part of that process, so that is roughly about a $2.3 million award today. That's about 160,000 other under budget, so the numbers came in very good for this construction area. So that's going to move forward after your approval. That construction will start in June with the expectation that second semester, we'd be able to use those rooms if everything goes well.
And that money is available in our current?
Correct. That is available right now in the building and site enhancement fund.
Trustee Barry?
We keep saying $2.3 million for four classrooms. Just some work can be done at Cafeteria.
Yes, the Cafeteria expansion.
Plumbing, electrical, the whole nine yards. So we're not just building four rooms.
Correct.
That's the feedback I'm getting up there. There's going to be a lot more work.
The total budget is about $3 million, but this was just the trades for those additional items.
Yes, thank you.
Now, the second one, on item number 22, we talked about it in our board study session about having an infrastructure start, so that's what that's referring to. Just to remind you, as we talked about at that session, there was about $162 million of infrastructure needs for the next short and long term, up to 10 years, that we have an option to go back out to the voters at a no-mill increase, so we want to have an infrastructure committee to start looking at that, so we can be ready in November of 19 to have some sort of potential ballot on the docket for our constituents. The third item, as we talked about in the study session, is dealing with Michael Berry. Not to actually move forward the project, but anything you try to do a new project, there's a lead time you have to have for Architectural Services to design it and go through the state process. So that's what we're asking now under item number 23, is to start that process with the Michael Berry Center.
Any discussion? Trustee?
I suppose this could wait until later, and maybe it'll come up again later, but since you mentioned 23, we need to put together a really good, broad committee there, and besides the Michael Berry Center, looking at future careers that'll be exciting for our students to go to. I really appreciate all of us thinking about that. But our college also will be part of that mix, because we're opening up there. We have a manufacturing academy. We've had a health careers academy, which has been great. We're going to open a pre-education academy, so we should thank the college, too. I mean, it's a big, big picture. It almost makes me feel like a car with 14,000 parts, you know, and they all have to interconnect. So it's a big system, but it's got a great outcome in the graduation of our students. So I hope the committee will be really forward-thinking, but I just want to say now that we need them to be thinking about not just the high schools, not just all of the lower-level schools, but all the different ways that the city, our businesses, and other institutions intersect with Dearborn Public Schools.
Thank you, trustee Lane.
And if I could just add, too, that we did study the, you know, the Nashville's Ford next-generation learning model, and that is aligned with what you're saying. And so Dr. Chokol, Ms. Peterson, Dr. Byrow was involved, Majid Fadallah, and Hiel Al Cadre, Shannon Peterson, and there were some other team members involved, and they're very excited. And so that's going to definitely be aligned with some of the thoughts, and we've been able to see that, you know, in play in school visits. Secondly, in negotiations with Ford to hopefully get even a greater partnership with them, so we're going to try to work with that as well.
Thank you.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Well, I guess to add to this is that when we have this, because I was on the last task force that we had that looked at a very large bond and the infrastructure needs quite a number of years ago, and I know that when the conversations begin, what we need to look at is how do each of these improvements support those kinds of programming choices that we're looking forward to, and what other options do we have financially and otherwise? I don't want everybody to get stuck on just looking at the plumbing, the electrical, and another building. They need to consider how it's all going to operate and function together, how we're going to sustain it moving forward, and what other opportunities do we have resource-wise in the community besides just going out for renewing of these bonds moving forward, so that we can take full advantage of the many choices that may be out there that will improve our students' educational experience in the end, because that's basically the outcome that we are all looking for.
Trustee Hamud?
To me, item 23 is of utmost importance, especially when we are looking at the proposals as well, and how this specific proposal, this specific item would help alleviate some of the overcrowdedness that we do see at Fortson right now. And I know that Principal Al Cadre spoke about this, and specifically, we know that at some point during the day, we have about 600 students that are out of the building at Fortson. And the Michael Berry Career Center and that growth and the educational opportunities that can come from this is crucial, specifically the students at Fortson when we look at the numbers on paper, even though we know it's different inside of the schools. But I feel like the proposal and the architect analysis at the Michael Berry Career Center go hand-in-hand in terms of educational opportunities for our students. I'm excited about this, and I hope that we move quickly when it comes to the expansion of the Michael Berry Center.
Regarding item 21, is there a possibility that we could put up what our current boundaries are and what 5A proposes?
A map?
Yes.
Can we put that up on the screen?
Okay, that's, there you go. That's, yeah, and 5A, they're right there together.
Okay, so everybody can see where the boundary lines are, who are here tonight. Okay? Anybody else? Yes, trustee Lane?
I did ask David Mustenan, who's probably circulating somewhere, but particularly the families that will be affected will need to be informed of this over time, and I know they're working on a plan which will involve the school principals, but this is a big change, so we need to get everybody on board. We need to have the students start thinking about the new identities that they're going to have, their new places, or maybe their old place, but we need to get this out into the community, so everybody can start to reconfigure their mind, get into the new, the new way, assuming we pass this tonight, of course.
Yes.
Just so everyone knows as well, Woodworth already sent a small percentage of their students to Edsel Ford. Anyone south of Michigan Avenue that went to Woodworth was going to Edsel Ford. We just extended, obviously, and included some of the area west of Greenfield that would be part of that as well.
Yeah, I'm just saying that communication is a job that's never done. David Mustenan, I'm sure, is going to reiterate that. I mean, you just have to keep hitting on, hitting on that, so thank you for putting up the map, Dr. Mead.
You're welcome.
And I would assume that those parents would be contacted directly to let them know that their children or child is being moved or would have to move to a different school, correct?
Correct.
Trustee Petlicoff?
I'm going to hope that we are going to also move forward with some kind of welcoming committees, so to speak, at both the.
Good point.
The, even the elementary school from where these students feed from, so that, into the middle school, so that they, the parents, the students are excited about this and are looking at this as an opportunity to get to know and become familiar with this, because there will be some resistance. I mean, it's just natural, it's human nature, to change, even if the students are familiar enough with the programs at the other schools. They've been seeing them as rivals for years, and now are going to have to change gears. I would like to also hope that we do some kind of counsel, have some kind of social work or counseling support to get them on board, especially the parents. It seems to be more difficult for parents with boundary changes than it is for students at times.
Right.
Because they, too, have a, have an affiliation for the schools where their kids have been going to, and I want them to feel just as much a part of their new boundary as they have been of the old. So we may need to come up with some kind of something over the summertime, either, you know, in a picnic-like atmosphere, or something that makes it beckoning to them to come and check out what their new environment's going to be in the near future.
Good suggestions. Trustee Lane?
Since trustee Petchukhov brings this up, I will say that was one moment that was really memorable, is one student who got up, and I don't even remember among the many meetings, but said that she was not welcomed into the school when they switched, when one group moved to another school. We don't want to see that happen. It won't happen. So trustee Petchukhov, point is right on. Everybody needs to be welcomed into the new schools, and I'm sure that, I know that Edsel, for one, has had an incoming student orientation. We have Link Crew, but it has to be done, and it should be done, and those types of things, the soft things, will be important to make the transition productive for everybody, so.
Absolutely.
Trustee Nasser?
Also, one of the important things is if there are students that are currently going to Fortson and their sibling would, could possibly go to Edsel, and they both go to Edsel, they'll both receive busing when they wouldn't be getting busing to Fortson, so that's a point to consider if you have a sophomore or a freshman currently in the school, and they'd be, they'd be switching, switch them both over to Edsel.
Correct.
Could you restate what she just said?
She said that basically if we have an upperclassman who, say, you have a junior at Fortson, and they want to transfer to Edsel Ford, next year, that student who did not get busing to Fortson will now receive busing to Edsel Ford along with their freshman sibling.
Good. Thank you. Any other discussion?
As a perk.
Any other discussion? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I still have agenda. Yeah, I still have agenda items.
Sure.
So I just want to, again, we always have retirements every month that come to the board, and so I want to congratulate and thank our retirees, and so I'll just mention Rebecca Ventura, over 28 years of service. We have Cynthia Elder, 20, over 28 years of service. Valerie Ferrante, over 25 years of service. Sherilyn Herakis, 16 years of service. Lori, excuse me, Lori Lacasio, 32 years of service. Jeffrey Oshnack, 32 years of service. And Afaf Rumaya, 24 years of service. So we want, I thank them and appreciate their dedication to this, because if we can give them a big round of applause. And again, they will see a card from me, a handwritten card thanking them for their service. That's it for agenda.
Non-agenda items?
So I want to mention, this is Social Worker Appreciation Month, so I wanted to say we appreciate all our social workers that go above and beyond, especially in these times of additional mental health issues and other things, just a great appreciation. So I just wanted to recognize them for the great work, and I know we have one of the social, one of our administrators, Dr. Bazey Gates, came out of the social work rank, so we're glad to have her and the entire team of social workers. I know they support each other. Dr. Chokol's going to be mentioning this later during the presentation, but March is reading month. I've seen the trustees out there. I've been out there. It's busy. It's great. It's a fun time. I was actually a little under the weather the other day, but I just couldn't miss the reading, no matter what, and I love, it's just so important to get out there and appreciate the teachers that welcome us in there, welcome us into their schools, and they just make us feel so welcome, and the students are so appreciative. So I just want to thank anybody, not only, you know, the public as well, anybody who's been going in from the public and has been involved with the reading. Thank you for promoting literacy. I want to tell you, too, I'm very proud of my superintendent student advisory council, Ms. Dean Charles and several, and Mr. Thorpe, trustee Thorpe, you were there. They had an awesome presentation at the Dearborn Rotary. Every year it gets better, and they interacted with Rotarians throughout the month, and it was great to see them show all the positive charity they do in the community. And so we see our youth, and I think when we came out of that meeting, despite some of the issues that are going on nationally and otherwise, I'm very optimistic about our future because of our youth and how they're performing, so I'm very proud of them. Good. I'm going to have Ms. Mesa Ali Bazey and Ms. Chris Cipperly come up, the DFT president and the executive director of Staff and Student Services. We did have a tentative calendar that came out, and I do want to say tentative, because calendars that come out are subject to ratification by the union and obviously by the board, but I can tell you that we, the calendar that we came to, we wouldn't have TA'd it or tentatively agreed if we didn't think it was a calendar that would meet our needs, given all the parameters and things that we have to deal with. And so they've been working hard. I know they've been negotiating, and, and Mr. Cedar.
Since July 13, 2017.
And so, you know, we don't always agree necessarily, but we are very respectful, and we have a great thing going in Dearborn, and I say that at the state level. We appreciate our teachers, our unions, and the fact that we're collaborative in nature and that we want what's best for our students. We really do maintain the vision, so I want to thank the union as well, and my team who's been negotiating with them. So I'll turn it over to them about the calendar.
So I just threw a quick PowerPoint slide up there. Some of the things that we're considering that we have to. Some of the things that we're considering, that we have to consider through our bargaining of the calendar dates, is that the Wayne County Common Calendar. Wayne County tells us that there are certain breaks, such as the December break and the spring break, that are non-negotiable. We have to align with the calendar on those breaks. We also consider the legal requirement to add five additional school days, and yes, it is a legal requirement that we have 180 school days. We currently have 175, so that additional five days is required once the contract is up. We consider the Eid holiday, holidays. We look at the pre-Labor Day start and how that would impact getting all the days in that we need to, and still honoring and considering all the other holidays that we're required to consider. Also, the midwinter break, the length of the midwinter break is always a major topic that is discussed, and that really is where we get some flexibility on whether or not it's a full week off or it's a couple of days off. It really depends on when the Eid holidays fall, how many days into June we end up, because we don't want to be in school when the temps are at all-time highs, and so we try to wrap up the school year at a reasonable date. So that's another area that we consider, issue, component that we consider. Conference release days, which are already part of our contract, that they're usually the day before Thanksgiving and the day before Memorial Day break. And then again, as I said, the last day of school. The first bullet point that I have up there is that the 18-19 calendar has been tentatively agreed, agreed on and has been sent out publicly, and that I just want to clarify that that is pending contract ratification. Ms. Cipperley will speak more to that.
And board approval.
And board approval, I'm sorry.
Yes, so because it is part of the contract that we're negotiating now, we really could have held on to it until we actually had a tentative agreement. But of course, we didn't want to do that because we know how important it is for planning purposes. So we agreed as, both sides agreed to allow it to be released tentatively. And we've done this before during negotiations. I think this is my third contract to negotiate, and every time that we have done it, we have done the same thing, because we're not, we're not at a ratification purpose as early as March.
I appreciate your thoughtfulness on that issue. Thank you.
Well, you're very welcome.
And we will continue to bargain on the remaining calendars, years, calendars for the collective bargaining agreement for the remainder of the calendar, of the contract. It is a puzzle putting together all the pieces. We know we have certain, you know, certain fixed things, like Ms. Ali Bazie explained as far as things that are for sure. We have limited flexibility, and that's where the give and take comes in. We know the union has certain things that they value, and I know that we have things that the board, the board and the community values. And so we're, we're working hard to, to get that settled and to both parts, both sides for ratification. We hope, we hope that happens soon.
Yeah, can't be soon enough, as far as I'm concerned.
And her husband. Her husband asked me to speed up the process. I just want to say that our goal is to publicize the calendars as soon as they are board-approved and ratified, and the contract's ratified, so everybody will get much better notice for the years to come. That's our plan.
I'd also like to piggyback on the comment made earlier about how important communications are and what a great job Mr. Mustenan does.
Yes.
The press release that he sent out with this calendar was outstanding. We gave him a few ideas and then he took it and ran with it. So I do encourage people that when things like this come out, please read the press release before being reactive about the colored calendar.
Yes, really quickly. So one of the things that I had noticed on the calendar was we had three days off in June that, for the Eid holiday, and when you look at the lunar calendar, Eid is determined based on when the new moon falls. So the new moon will fall on June 3rd, which means that is not going to be Eid. Eid would be one of the two days after that. And so one of the things I would suggest is to have school on June 3rd and either make a day off the day after Easter, or release school one day early, so on the 13th instead of the 14th.
So, so we will explore that with the mosque, all the local mosques, to make sure. Traditionally, there's always been three days scheduled for Eid holiday, because we want to make sure that we get the right day. And there's been years in the past where it was the, we planned on the wrong day and then attendance wasn't at 75%. So we will definitely explore that possibility and then discuss it and, and go from there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And if I could just add something on that too, you know, I got some communications over the weekend as well, and you know, with the holidays, it's a combination of things. And you know, I've been in this district and I've seen, we didn't always get the Eid holiday off. We're valuing our students and our families and our community. And secondly, we have to follow state law. So I can remember a time when I was teaching at Salina with 800 students, and we'd have the Eid holiday, and we'd have 30 students in the building, for example. So now that state law has changed and requires 75% attendance to, to count as a day, you could be looking at either coming back another day if you don't get it, or financial penalty. So it's a combination of first and foremost accommodating the communities and then making sure we're adhering to that. Just like if we had, we would not schedule on, you know, another holiday like Good Friday or others, because we know we're not going to get students there, you know? And that's kind of the tradition of what we've always done. So that's just another analogy of, you know, both accommodating the community and also adhering to state law when we make those decisions.
Trustee Thorpe?
And I appreciate you for trying to get the calendar out early, especially since we're looking at an early start, which is the first time we've done this in several years. And as much as everyone's counting down the number of days until summer vacation, I know that if you've got to put deposits down and plan a, the end of summer trip, you need to know that we're going to be back in school until that Friday.
Trustee Hamud?
And I appreciate the district being inclusive when it comes to what days are we off and what are some of the holidays that we're considering. And I'm very proud of this district, and I personally think it should have happened a long time ago when we finally say, okay, we are including the Eid holiday in our calendars. So it's, it's long overdue and it's about time, but I'm very proud that we are being inclusive and we're making sure that we are a representation and accommodating everybody in our district, because we do have diverse faculty and diverse students, so.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
One final point, is this also sets in place our summer construction and cleaning schedule. I know the operations people, they've got a limited amount of time to get things done over the summer, and it's best to do it when students aren't in session. So establishing that calendar also helps them with operations.
Very good. Any other discussion? Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Next item, please. Oh, wait, trustee?
Oh, I thought Dr. Mead was, or Dr. Malako.
He's Malako.
Yes, I know who's who. My mouth just hasn't caught up with my brain, sorry. I, I wanted to ask Dr. Malako if he could give us an update on the National School Walkout. Is that going to be mentioned at all?
Yes, thank you. Sure, so yeah, I can mention that, and I did send out a blog communication. But basically, our position on that, and I've been actually on some radio shows with Congresswoman Dingell and Chief Haddad, and so our administration started when we first heard about this walkout. We started by having discussions with the principals and with the student leadership groups. And so what we decided to do is find out what they wanted to do. And we understand and we recognize the First Amendment right. Now, as a district, we're not promoting it, we're not organizing it, but what we are doing is going to ensure student safety. And so we're going to allow the students to exercise their First Amendment right. We will ensure, apparently it's supposed to be 17 minutes honoring each of the victims from Florida, and so we'll have staff supervising. For students that do not want to participate, they can stay within the building and they'll have adequate supervision. And each of the building principals has a plan of action that they've already discussed with their student groups and their faculty, which was submitted to central office. So I appreciate our team getting, was very proactive, and the principals and the executive directors who've worked on that. Secondly, we don't anticipate involvement by the elementary or middle schools. We did say if there were middle school issues that we just had the principal deal with it on an individual basis, but we don't, we're not going to, you know, as far as going outside or anything, we don't anticipate anything there, that the principals will work with them. And to this point, I haven't heard any issues there. So it's definitely going to be the high schools. We're also going to limit access to the public, so people cannot just come on our property during that. We're going to protect the students. We don't need a big public spectacle. This is about the students. And so we're going to allow the students to exercise their right peacefully, and partially because we want to make sure they're safe. We just don't want to have people coming onto property, and so we're going to make sure that that doesn't occur. Yes.
Are we in contact as well with Chief Haddad, the Dearborn Police, just to our parents know that the students, hopefully we can do what, what we can to keep them safe during this walkout?
Correct. The SRO officers are in discussions with the building principal, and I've directly talked to Chief Haddad, and he has said he will provide his, whatever presence is needed to help this situation, as he has when we've had other things that have gone on in the district, so.
Yes, I talked to him as well, and he assured, assured me that there would be police presence.
Trustee Lane?
Several of us, I, I don't know what the students are planning, but I think it's a great idea to commemorate those students who lost their lives. I know that there's this walkout that's planned nationally on the 14th, and then there's another march in Washington, and I think it's a conversation that's long overdue. Several of us attended some community events on the topic to try to figure out what are, what are proactive measures, what are the best measures. And Chief Haddad was at a meeting that trustee Nasser and, and Dr. Mead and I were at. I don't remember if anybody else was there, but one thing he mentioned that I was not aware of, and I think it's an important thing to mention, is that the Dearborn Police have a special needs registration. So if people have someone in their household who might be hard of hearing, might be someone who would react to police, a police call, people can be registered with the Dearborn Police so that the police know how to react to them. They don't react adversely. So it's an important thing for families to consider, and I just want to mention that so that everybody is aware of it and we all start acting a lot more proactively to keep everybody safe.
May I ask if the people in the back can hear? Okay, all right. Where are we?
I'm finished.
You're finished. Next item.
Next item, recognition and acknowledgements. Commendations. Commendations will be read by Edsel Ford High School seniors Zachary Darkowski and Alfonso Angeles.
Gentlemen, how are you tonight?
Doing good.
Good.
Great.
Commendations to the following seven high school students who did an outstanding job of representing our community as they shared poems, personal stories, and thoughts during a vigil on February 20th to remember the victims of the tragic shooting in Parkland, Florida. Rami Saad, 11th grade, and Alabas Farhat, senior at Fortson High School. Maxine Mackey, Nora Maglin, and Alex Ruston, all 11th grade at Dearborn High School. Jenna Kobisi, 10th grade, and Gadi Vazay, senior from Edsel Ford High School. From Fortson High School, commendations to senior Fatmetaj for winning third place and $150 at the annual Dearborn Optimists Club essay contest. The theme of the essays was, can society function without respect? The Optimist Service Organization sponsors in the essay contest, and its mission is to bring out the best youth in communities. Finally, from Fortson High School, commendations to the students on the Fortson Robotics Team for winning first place after competing against 40 teams at a district competition in Southfield.
Good.
This competition is one of two in which the team will compete in hopes of advancing to the state competition. Special thanks to the team mentors from the Ford Motor Company and Fortson teacher and team sponsor, Ms. Renee Garcia, for her help in preparing the team for the next competition. The team's next competition will take place at Belleville High School, March 22nd through the 24th.
And from Edsel Ford High School, we would like to offer commendations to senior William Moreno, state champion of the Division 1 160-pound weight class. Being a four-time state wrestler, Will has achieved a career win record of 208 wins and 13 losses.
Oh, wonderful.
This season, Will broke the consecutive win record with 55 wins and zero losses.
Wow.
He remains an excellent student with a 3.8 cumulative GPA and was also 2017 homecoming king. We also like to offer commendations to head coach Johnny Borg, assistant coach Coach Ken Lucas, and volunteer assistant Rob Moreno. We would also like to offer commendations to the Edsel Ford ThunderBots, Edsel Ford's robotics team. They earned the judges award at the recent first power-up district robotics competition in Southfield. From Dearborn High School, we'd like to offer commendations to chef Will Coleman for sharing his time and talents, demonstrating cooking skills for our students in the eighth-grade life management class at Bryant Middle School. Chef Coleman is a senior at Dearborn High and participates in the culinary program at Michael, at the Michael Berry Career Center. And from McDonald Elementary, we would like to offer commendations to Mohammed Sabra, community and building liaison, and Edmund Bennett, social studies teacher at Stout Middle School. In addition to Amy Mordecai, principal, and Lauren Jacobs, kindergarten teacher at McDonald Elementary, for their efforts to collect plastic grocery bags. The bags are used to create plarn, which is a plastic yarn that is used to make weather-resistant blankets, bags, pillows, and mats for the homeless. The project was in partnership with Motor City Mitten Mission.
Thank you very much. Nice job. Trustee Lane?
Since the students from Edsel are, are here tonight reading, I'd like to ask you to take back to Edsel Ford a compliment that I got on the, from some outside visitors on the Kuramatsu Day. When that was held at Fortson, they were, the visitors were really impressed at the studiousness of the, the tenor at Fortson. But at Edsel Ford, they were really impressed with the student body and the energy there. So I, I commend Edsel Ford and would like you to carry that back to Principal Casebolt. Thank you.
Trustee Barry?
I'm going to add another feather in William Moreno's hat. He also was recognized as the Van Patrick Award winner yesterday. This is hot off the press. Amazing student athlete. I had the program book, I wanted to recognize the other honorees, but my daughter decided to switch cars with me today. Someplace out there. But yeah, amazing young people that represented Divine Child, Fortson, Edsel Ford, and Dearborn High. Just blows my mind what they're able to do. And the main theme yesterday was balancing, time management, these young ladies and young men. That's what, I mean, I was taking notes on time management and all the things they do in, in their life, so congratulations to William Moreno, too.
Can I add to that, trust, oh, go ahead.
Trustee Lane?
No, no.
Trustee Hamud?
And we did have more than one student actually place within the wrestling for the states, and I said that last time, I'm very proud of him. He is my cousin. He would be very mad if I don't say his name.
You better be.
But he did place fifth within the states.
He placed fifth, yes.
And he, that's Ali Mackey, so when he watches this, he won't be mad at me for not mentioning his name. So I'm very proud of him.
He was seconds away from wrestling for third place in the state, so amazing career there, too.
Trustee Lane?
Dr. Malako is strangely quiet tonight. I was wondering whether he was going to mention our advanced ed accreditation in commendations. I was just really so excited when the team presented in this room and the compliments they gave this district were really overwhelming. The entire district should really share that. And I know that Will be coming, they said they would deliver a report within 30 days, but they almost couldn't find fault with us. I thought this was great.
And they said our school improvement office is second to none, so that was...
Well...
In the nation. So that deserves a round of applause for our school improvement.
Well, and this connects to the next thing, which if, we'll let maybe trustee Barry announce.
Next item is celebration of growth and graduation rates. McEnroe Rating and Bridge Magazine.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Peterson and Mr. Minor to come up, and I'll just connect it in this way, is that that was actually recognized, and so it's all comes together. And it did start on that day, the advanced ed visit, and we're very proud of what has occurred. You know, last year we were celebrating 93% graduation rates. This year it's gone up. We're going to do a little presentation, we're going to have some people come up, and I invited a lot here, that's why it's packed in here tonight. But to connect with you, you know, when we talk about the McEnroe Center, I was talking about the exact thing, and they, they watched that video as well, and they're planning to put an article out on Dearborn Schools because of some of the ratings that occurred through that, and we're going to talk about it in a moment. But I would say, yes, you know, Fatmi Farage, the entire team, I want to say here too, we, we talk about boundaries and things, you know, thank you to the community for voicing their opinion, because these tough decisions the board's going to have to make today... going to have to make today are going to keep those positive things going, and the long-term stability of the district for the benefit of our students. So we have administrators here, we have teachers, we invited the PTA, the parents, the board is a part of this, the teachers, the non-instructional, everybody who's here is a part of the celebration, a part of the great work through the Advanced Ed. And I know that some of the trustees, I could tell, we were all proud that day at that special meeting. And, you know, it is a collaborative work that has led to this success. And again, what is the success? It's how our students are doing. So I want to go back to our vision. That's the thing we always do. So I'm going to ask anybody who's here, we did this last year, but I'm going to come around to the podium. I'm welcoming, and David will help, welcoming you to kind of come up, and please feel free to come up to the podium, whoever can make their way. And I'm going to come around as well.
What are you going to do?
To take a selfie.
Oh, it's a selfie.
Well, if you insist.
It's all my fault.
If you insist.
Oh, yeah, you got to do it.
No, we're going to ask everyone to come up. We want the whole team. Come on up. Don't hesitate. We have a lot of people here. We ask you to come up through the aisle. Come up through the aisle. And yes, we will get the selfie.
Good.
Do we need to sign here, David, too?
Come on, teacher.
Come on, don't be shy. Parents, anybody who's here. All right, so we'll get it out of the way. We'll get the selfie out of the way. David, we'll get that out of the way. I got to get a few. All right, here we go. Awesome. So, Eddie.
David.
So now, now for the data. And, you know, if the board is welcome to come up, too. You're part of the team.
When you're there, I'm there.
I'm going to turn this over now to Ms. Peterson.
Sure, we totally just love her.
Yes.
Oh, look at her. I have to tell you, I'm so jealous of the students being able to read on their little cell phones every time they come up here. I was thinking the same thing. They read.
Way too small.
So I'm just jealous that they can read from their cell phones.
Oh, I was going to say.
Those were the days.
I don't think the microphone's on.
Doesn't seem like it is.
Test, test.
My little raspy voice. Oh, I don't like mics. I am jealous of the students, though, because they can read on their cell phones, and I cannot do that any longer. So we have great things to celebrate, because our graduation rates since 2011 have climbed from a low of 76%.
Wow.
All the way to 94.69%. We're just going to say 95. So...
Yay!
And I think one of the best things about that is when you look at our subgroups, they, those graduation rates have also increased. Our English language learners have increased to a 90% graduation rate. That's an 11% increase since 2012. Economically disadvantaged students have increased 8% since then. African-American students have an 89% graduation rate, and that's the highest increase. That's a 15% increase. And our students with disabilities have about a 5% increase. So we're not just, it's not just, it's all students in every group that we're, we're reaching this. And I have to tell you that our staff is great. You can't go into a classroom in Dearborn and not see a teacher advocating for their students. They really treat them as part of their family. You know, I laugh at home. My daughter, every Christmas, asks for glue sticks for her students in school. I don't know why that's the thing. But I will have teachers advocate for jackets, clothes. They'll buy snacks in case a student shows up without a snack. They will do whatever they need to, to help our students. But we have four gentlemen that really work with the high school students one-on-one as they fall behind. And I'm going to introduce Mr. Minor here. He is one of the original graduation intervention specialists, and they are critical to this work of catching our high schoolers up when they, when they have a little rough patch in high school. So I'm going to let Mr. Minor talk about the wonderful work that he and his other colleagues do for our students.
Good evening, everybody. I, I just want to say, we're so lucky in the position that we have, the other three gentlemen and myself. You know, we're part of such excellent teams. The characteristics that Mrs. Peterson talks about with teachers advocating for kids, you know, we're really just there as that extra layer support for them, but our teachers are, you know, ferociously defensive of our students' needs. It really is a pleasure to work with them. Our primary responsibility really is to track those kids that in large comprehensive high schools like ours often would fall behind or, you know, fall through the cracks. And Dearborn made a commitment some time ago, and it continues with the current administration, that that's just not acceptable. And so that's our primary focus. We track those kids, we look for danger signs, we meet with families, we watch the data, we look for trends, and, and we spend a considerable amount of time doing that. Kids still stumble. It's a, they're teenagers, and that's still likely to happen. So when they do stumble, we work with our teams to coordinate getting students into credit recovery classes, to make sure that, you know, whatever the needs are that they're falling short on get met. And then lastly, we kind of, in some ways, are kind of like a floating piece in the high school, as kind of an advocate in between all the groups of stakeholders in the building, administration, teachers, parents, kids, to kind of figure out where there might be trouble brewing, or where somebody might feel like something has been miscommunicated. And our job is really to kind of repair those bridges so that all the people that work with our kids can continue to do the amazing work that they do all the time. So, you know, it's a, the numbers are amazing, and I'm just, you know, I'm always very proud to tell people what we do here in this district.
And I have to tell you, so I went all the way to Plymouth to get my hair done. That's where I get it done. And I happened, there was a receptionist there, young girl, and she was talking about where she went to school. She goes to Dearborn High, and she transferred there, and, and mentioned him by name for the work that he has done to help her. She didn't really know my position. She just knew I worked for Dearborn Schools, but told, and it's, when you hear it from a student, like how much help they have been given, that's when you know we're doing great things.
And your hair looks great.
So if I could just, and really, this is a, it's a, this is a full district effort. So these are, you know, these targeted interventions. We're actually trying to publish on that model as well, out there, state and nationally. We've submitted an article. But really, it's the entire, it's everyone behind us. That's why we came out and got the big selfie, because it's really about everybody here, and we appreciate the great work of the interventionists and the entire team. So going with that, last year, you might say, okay, well, your graduations, you know, oh, well, you can do that by low. Well, we haven't lowered standard. In fact, we require more credits than the state does for graduation. So we don't have a lower standard. We have a higher standard, actually. We hold our students to higher expectations. And last year, you might recall, we had all three high schools that were rated as academic state champs by Bridge Magazine. That was based on growth and achievement, but it was also based on success in college preparer, preparation. So how well are your students doing beyond? They had a measurement tool that they were using to rate our three high schools. Well, this year, what happened, and this was put out, is we became a district academic state champ for the K8. And that was, again, growth. They actually had us, and it was mentioned at the Advanced Ed meeting by Dr. Quintana, but they actually have us as number one when measured against large districts. And we're in the top 20 when you look at all districts in the state of Michigan. They evaluated over 500 school districts. Again, I was mentioning the McEnaw Center, and there's another, again, these independent groups that are coming in and measuring performance. And so we have a high number of schools that were rated at the high level. There's 3,550, I believe, schools approximately in Michigan. And so we had five in the top 10, 16 in the top 100. Dearborn Schools was recognized in the report as, you know, a model district, is basically what was stated to me by the gentleman who then interviewed me last week, and is actually putting together a large article. And he wants to get in contact with some of the things that we're doing that he would like to see replicated in other school districts. So again, these data sets are coming at a, at a consistent time, and it's showing that the team here is working, the board. We appreciate the support of the board and everyone here. So I'm very proud to be superintendent. I thank everyone for their hard work and dedication. Thank you.